Okay, we're gonna call to order tonight, um, July eighth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting. And we will begin with roll call. Uh, Commissioner Zackman.
Here.
Commissioner Hargreaves.
Here.
Commissioner Kozaki.
Here.
And Commissioner Brummond is here. Just make note that Commissioner Lind is absent. And I'd invite you all to stand and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving right along to the agenda approval tonight. It's a pretty light agenda, but is there anyone who has any, um, requests to make changes? If not, then I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, and at this point in time, we, uh, usually are typically open up the floor, uh, for public comment opportunity for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. Before I go into the spiel though, I will just note that there is no one from the public present tonight. And so we will, um, open the public forum and then also just close the public forum. And I'm double checking here. I don't think we need any.
We don't need a.
Yeah, we don't need a motion for that. Okay, and then, uh, we'll move on to the minutes from last month's meeting, June sixth. Is there anyone who, uh, needed to make any comments or corrections? And if not, then I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June sixth.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, and then that takes us right into our new business for tonight, which is just one public hearing regarding the City Park Remaster Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And that's gonna begin with a staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start this by, um, announcing that at the last city council meeting, City Park was formally renamed to Heritage Park. So that's why we're in a transition stage where we are referencing it to right now as Heritage City Park Remaster. So bear with me on that, but, um, we, uh, we are working with the, uh, Parks and Rock Manager and Communications to roll out the name officially. So, um, I might switch back and forth between the two names tonight here. So, the item tonight is just a comprehensive plan amendment to clean up the site plan application that was already reviewed by the Planning Commission and was approved by city council. So this is a city-initiated comprehensive plan amendment. It's specifically for the property two, two zero four zero zero, Conero fifty. This is the western parcel that makes up Heritage Park. It's actually two different parcels that it's made up of. So, as a part of the Heritage Park Remaster, utilities will be brought through the site and stopped to the property for the following uses. The new park building, which is on the western side, and then the potential splash pad to be included in a future phase of park improvements, and then irrigation for the entire properties of both sides. Uh, so it is important that we have utilities available to the site for it to function as the site plan is currently shown. So if approved, the comprehensive plan amendment will be updating our staging plan and our twenty forty comprehensive plan so that the western parcel is moved up from what is currently shown as Phase Three, twenty thirty to twenty thirty-five is the approximate timeframe associated with that, to our current phase, which is twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. So our staging plan reflects anticipated timeline of sewer services for areas located where regional interceptors from adjacent communities will be extended. It provides anticipated growth in fiber increments and creates an orderly, logical growth pattern based on development. Anticipated development patterns and the availability of the infrastructure. Uh, for comprehensive plan amendment, our comprehensive plan is a living document. It can be amended at the discretion of the city based on new evidence, and it is not uncommon for it to be amended. So consistent with, staff does believe that the request tonight is consistent with our overall sewer service anticipated for the park since the eastern side of the parcel is located in Phase One. So we're just extending that boundary to encompass the entire park now. The western parcel was not obtained by the city until after the creation of the twenty forty comprehensive plan, which is likely why it has a different, uh, staging phase right now. Uh, additionally, utilizing the larger western parcel for the park building and eventual splash pad will allow for an enhanced site that enables more amenities for the public's use at the city's largest park. Uh, further, uh, some reasons why we believe it makes sense to make this change is that the proposed amendment does support the city to achieve three of the goal, three of the goals like outlined in the Parks and Trails chapter. I believe there are six goals in total, but, um, goal one is to implement the Parks and Trails Plan based on the need of Corcoran residents and park system patrons, develop the park system, the public values and visits, and develop a system of parks and trails with a variety of active and passive uses that reflect the special character of the city, its history and natural resources. So, the, in other words, staff's saying that the fact that we'll be able to offer a new park building that will allow for community meeting space and, and it's reflective of the city's history while offering a new amenity. We do believe that it's in line with the overall goals of the comprehensive plan. For the recommendation tonight, the Planning Commission should open the public hearing and take any testimony, and staff recommends approval of the draft resolution approving the comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you, Natalie. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing. And again, making note that because only in-person comments are accepted, um, for those who may be joining on Zoom, there is no one from the public here tonight. So I will also then make a motion to close tonight's public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? All right, and so then we can just go ahead and move forward with any discussion, questions, and then our, ultimately our recommendations. So, is there anyone who had, uh, questions or, um, issues they'd like to discuss?
I just wanna clarify, the phasing, is the musa phasing?
Correct. Yep, so it's, yeah, for the sewer service areas, you'd have to be in the musa to get the word.
Okay, so we're just extending the musa to cover that part of the park?
So it's within the musa, it's just, it was, it's in Phase Three, yeah.
Okay. At first I was thinking it had something to do with the park itself, the phasing of the park itself.
It does a little bit because the eastern parcel is Phase One for utilities and, or water and sewer specifically. And then, um, the western parcel right now is Phase Three, so we're moving up the western parcel to Phase One.
And that's because we want to build the building this year?
It will, it'll, yes, the building is, will be under construction this year to my, to my knowledge. Um, that we are moving forward with site work imminently. Um, but the, the utilities will allow for the park building as well as irrigation on the western side as well.
Okay, are they basically planning on doing the whole park other than like splash pad and?
Uh, so we are doing the first phase. There will, the, the eastern side will also eventually need some improvements that are not included in this first phase. And I believe there is still desire to eventually have a splash pad, which would be located on the western parcel near the park building, but that is not included in this first phase.
The first phase really includes the park building and that playground and then the, um, yeah.
We're updating the fields quite a bit as well.
Yeah. But I think that the goal is to perhaps find a partner for any future development on the west for a sports complex type thing. That's what the, no? Okay, nevermind.
Um, I don't know if, I don't know if there's a partner aspect, the, um, I don't recall that being discussed, but we may do with the park dedication that we currently have. So the rest of the improvements will be future phases as park dedication becomes available.
Did they decide to pave the whole parking lot or are they gonna have their?
They did.
They'll pave the whole parking lot, yep. Okay, well, this will be exciting.
Does anyone else have any, uh, any of the other commissioners have any questions?
Are there any pickleball courts?
No, not at this time, not that we, I, I think we have some space carved out for potential future pickleball courts, but not in part of the current.
Okay, what, on the site plan, there's a series of rectangles. What, what are those?
I believe that's just showing how different field setups can happen, so I believe ones of, uh,
Soccer.
Yeah, several soccer courts are shown, base, and then, that one's not baseball, I forget.
I believe one's a cricket.
Cricket.
Thank you, okay. I was gonna say badminton, that's not the right.
You're gonna have cricket?
We already have cricket.
It's very popular at the city park.
Really, really?
Yeah, 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 we have like, we have a distinct, like, we're one of the only cricket, we're one of, there's a cricket club that specifically considers it their home park and so on.
Interesting, okay, cool.
I do have a question just for, for clarity's sake. Um, so when the city, city council approved the site plan in May, that approval stated that this was in Phase One, when really it was in Phase Three? No?
So, yeah, it said that the park was in Phase One, and that was an error on my end. The eastern side is Phase One, the western side is, is Phase Three, and that I missed in my initial review.
Okay, so they, they approved it as, as if it was all in, in Phase One, when in fact it was Phase Three? And now we're just reviewing to kind of align with what city council had a vision for, okay?
Correct, yeah.
Otherwise, we would've done this at the same time.
Otherwise, it would've been at the same time. Yeah, it would've just been a part of that initial step, so that was an, an error on my end.
If there are no other questions or discussions, then because of ultimately what you just highlighted, then I think that we could feel confident in making a motion to approve the, um, comprehensive plan amendment.
Are you making a motion?
I will make a motion.
I will second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, and so that takes care of our only new business tonight. And so then what we've done on a short night like tonight is use the rest of the time to do some yearly Planning Commission training, and so that's gonna be another staff presentation.
Yes. So this will be, it's a long presentation, so I try to keep my presentation short. That does not happen on train tonight. Um, and then we have an interactive component at the end.
We're not gonna do the same thing we did.
Nope, a game show.
The game show?
It's not going to be Jeopardy. It's a different game, but it is a game.
It's not exactly the same, but take notes. Feel free to take notes. This is, you're gonna learn the history and foundation for the basis of the Planning Commission.
And Peter's really competitive.
Okay, so, um, I actually don't go too much into the history this time, 'cause I wanted it to be interesting for, so I tried, I had to switch it up a little bit. Um, if you are interested in the history, I can certainly send you last year's presentation, which may have a few more contextual slides for you.
Can I make a formal request for that?
I'm sorry, what?
Can I make a formal request to receive last year's?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I can get that sent to you. It, it's actually, for the most part, there are a lot of slides that I, I've reused, but there are a few different slides on the, uh, in both presentations, so I can send that.
Thank you.
Um, so for starters, why do we plan? The planning process evaluates the community's past and provides vision for how to address anticipated changes in the future. And so through planning, the community can anticipate how to protect our community character and our natural resources, drive economic development and investments, provide cost-effective delivery of services, and participate in intergovernmental cooperation with neighboring cities and, um, other government entities, and balance the community interests with private property rights. The municipal planning authority comes from a couple places. The U.S. Constitution grants general police powers to the states. Police powers limit an individual's rights in the interest of the larger community. Uh, you'll see this wording a lot in municipal planning to promote public health, safety, and welfare. That is referencing to the police powers. Um, states delegate police power to local government units through enabling legislation. Uh, so in, in Minnesota, that's specifically statute four, six, two dot three, five, one, where municipal planning authority is granted. And then the U.S. Supreme Court upheld the use of zoning as a police power uh, in nineteen twenty-six in the court case Village of Euclid versus Ambler Realty. So that's just kind of a, it's a fairly, you hear the term Euclidian zoning, and that usually is referring to that court case. Oh my goodness. Are you got it? Okay. Um, so, and then the Corcoran City Code establishes the Planning Commission as the city's planning agency in Chapter thirty-four. So that's where we get our power to act as the planning body for the city. So then as far as the role of the Planning Commission, it, the, uh, this type of commission is created based on the presumption that residents should be involved in the review and recommendation of land use applications, as well as subdivision and zoning ordinances. Um, the role of the commission is to host public hearings for development applications and ordinance amendments. That's a, a large part of, of the procedure that we uphold. And then mostly, the commission will make quasi-judicial recommendations to council. This is, um, the act of interpreting and applying written codes and ordinances. But there are times that you will also make legislative recommendations to council, uh, such as zoning ordinance amendments or comprehensive plan amendments. Uh, planning commissioners are not expected to complete their own technical review. They are expected to discuss how an application does or does not fit within the city's adopted guiding documents and provide feedback on areas where there is a matter of interpretation discretion. As far as the role of planning staff and consultants, we interpret and administer land use regulations as provided in City Code. We are the ones that typically meet with developers, property owners, and residents to discuss how they would like to use their property. And then we complete the technical review of land use applications and prefer, prepare staff reports that inform and advise you, the Planning Commission as well as city council. We research planning and land use issues, draft long-range plans and special projects, maintain the city records, and we provide the continuity and institutional knowledge, um, ideally. It, it, sometimes our staff turn over, but we are trying to, um, at this point, the Planning Division is, uh, working on establishing that institutional knowledge. And Kendra is, uh, with Lamform, is, provides really the most significant institu- institutional knowledge we have, because she's been with the city for, I wanna say, over twenty years. Um, we also educate and assist the public and consider the voice of planning at City Hall. I'll also note that consultants, consultants serve at the pleasure and direction of city council while working closely to coordinate land use items with city staff to inform a recommendation to council. So when you have a staff report from Lamform and she says staff recommendation, or it might be someone else on her team that's saying staff recommendation, that is all done in consultation with, uh, both with me, Dwight, as well as the Public Works Team. So it's not a consultant recommendation. It is representative of the overall staff team's recommendation. Uh, they also provide their professional advice and insight based on their experience with working in other cities as well as developers. And they also are invaluable when they provide services that the city might not have access to, such as additional staffing and software. So they're able to respond a bit more when there's an influx of work. Um, and then there are, uh, so they have software that can be very beneficial to have access to without us having to go out and buy a, a subscription to something to just use at once. Um, so as far as guiding documents, so again, the Planning Commission, um, should have, make their decisions based on the guiding documents that we've established as a city uh, through the previous planning commissioners and city councils. Uh, so the, the enabling legislation requires planning to begin with a comprehensive plan. That, and that needs to include an analysis of the community needs and goals, um, to have that as a basis. So every city that wants to have a municipal planning body has to have a comprehensive plan. Um, but cities also in the metropolitan council area have to update it every ten years, and we'll get into that a bit more later. Uh, so we have, um, we have to update it regularly because of our location in the Twin Cities. Uh, the comprehensive plan acts as the guiding policy for community development, as well as the zoning ordinance and any other land use regulations. Really sets the table. Any ordinances that we create need to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. And then just the subdivision ordinance, you will find in Title Nine of the City Code. And then the zoning ordinance, you'll find in Title Ten of our City Code. And those specifically are the tools that implement the comprehensive plan. The supporting rationale of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance should be provided by the comprehensive plan. They do need to interact with the two. And then, uh, the city also must keep in mind that regulations must be a reasonable means to meet legal ends. So, uh, if there is a less restrictive way to use an M-goal, then that should be, um, considered when we have zoning ordinance amendments or subdivision ordinances. Uh, so, uh, for a little bit more on the subdivision ordinance, this is what establishes the procedures for land division. Um, and subdivisions, we typically see them done as plats, or we also have, um, a couple other smaller subdivision processes right now, such as a minor subdivision. But this is simply the division of a parcel of land into lots, blocks, or sites. And it's, is required in order to sell, transfer, develop land, they have to go through the subdivision process. There are a few subdivision types that can be exempt by state statute. For example, residential property that results in, uh, each lot being at least twenty acres of five hundred feet of street drainage, they are exempt from city subdivision processes. Anything smaller than that, for residential land anyways, would have to go through the city's subdivision process. Uh, but sometimes you will see land, uh, in Corcoran specifically that gets carved up, that we had nothing to do with really. Um, and that's because it was really large parcels of land that they subdivided into. Um, so again, subdivision results in a platte, and the platte is basically the map of the subdivision that is the official document that gets recorded, uh, with Hennepin County. For the zoning ordinance, this regulates private property by establishing standards of development for individual lots, the use of land, and buildings within zoning districts. It works in conjunction with the zoning map for the city. And then it also determines different classes of uses within each district. So ours, our ordinance has allowed uses, um, or sometimes they're also called permitted uses, that, which means almost no questions asked. This is a use that can move forward with limited ability to put conditions, or really no conditions can be applied. Uh, sometimes you can have standards with, written within the code that you can apply, but we can't add anything above what is already called out in the code. We also have accessory uses. This must exist in connection with a principal use, like principal allowed use or a principal conditional use. Uh, conditional uses are an allowed use that require additional stipulations to ensure it fits with the area. Um, and interim are also another type of allowed use that can be approved for a limited amount of time. I will also add that we have administrative, some uses that we allow through administrative permit. It's very similar to an allowed use, uh, but sometimes it's just, they have, I think the best example is our accessory dwelling units. Uh, we have about ten standards that they need to satisfy, uh, and that's reviewed through an administrative process. So it's, um, it's kind of a step between allowed versus conditional, but, uh, because we're comfortable with the use and we've identified standards and we don't believe anything additional needs to be stipulated, we have that administrative permit as well.
So that doesn't have to go through the commission, the Planning Commission?
Correct, yep. Um, and then you'll also see bulk and area regulations within the zoning ordinance. So this is height limits, setback requirements from the property lines, uh, lot coverage or purview of surface maximums. And I would say that that's typically what we're, uh, what we have drafted in our ordinance. So this might vary a little bit with other cities' ordinances, but that's typically how each zoning district is set up in our ordinance. So as far as the types of application within the purview of the Planning Commission, we have a number. And I'm gonna just kind of skip through this slide because we're gonna go through each one of these. Um, and then I would say there's also a couple of applications that are only reviewed by staff. So this would be building permits, minor amendments to previously approved plans. So there's a threshold that's defined, if, if it's, um, less, it involves less than ten percent of the site. That might be an administrative approval for that amendment. Uh, again, administrative permits is another thing that would not go in front of the Planning Commission. And then there are some other applications that are only reviewed by city council. This includes sketch plans, final plats, uh, final PUDs, and, uh, minor subdivision that I mentioned earlier, or, uh, drainage and utility, vacation easements, things like that would only go in front of city council. I think this is a really helpful graphic, although I, um, I had one of my staff members today um, change it because it's from the League of Minnesota Cities, but I disagree with two of the items. I'll go over that real quick. So this is basically the pyramid of discretion. When we have the most discretion, it is with our comprehensive plan and our zoning and subdivision ordinances. When we are first establishing this, this is where we have the utmost discretion in how we are, um, laying these out as long as it's, um, as long as they are, we aren't doing anything illegal constitutionally or on the state legislation. That is where we are, uh, able to have the most creativity. And then amendments to these, uh, guiding documents is also where we still have a very high level of discretion. And then as we move up the pyramid to examples of applications that come in based on our ordinances, um, that's where we lose some of our discretion. For variances, I would say we, we do have a relatively high ability to deny or, um, we'll specifically deny a variance of, um, approving a variance, we have a little less discretion because they need to, as the applicant, prove that there is a practical difficulty, and it cannot be economic considerations alone. So just, or, or it can't even really be that, well, I don't wanna do it that way, I wanna do it this way. It really should be based on, um, there is a constraint on the lot that prevents me from building it to code. So for example, because of where the wetlands are located, um, it, I would not, I would not be able to build a house that meets all the setbacks without some relief, uh, from the front setback. For example, would be, uh, where a variance would make sense to apply. So we do have a lot of discretion to deny a variance because, again, that burden of proof is on the applicant. And we simply, uh, even if they do prove it, we don't, are not under any obligation to provide that relief. Um, but approving it, we have a little less discretion. They do have to meet those standards. And then conditional use permits, we have, um, a fair amount of discretion. I kind of get a little bit more into that later. Um, and then subdivision applications such as plats, this is, I would say, relatively less discretion. Uh, if it meets the standards we have outlined in our subdivision and zoning ordinance, it must be approved. Um, and then we have the, um, things like plan review, which would be a site plan, um, or building permits. Again, this is where we have very little discretion. If it meets the written ordinances that we have outlined, it must be approved. We can't decide to not approve it at that stage. Um, so again, so this green area is where we have legislative decisions. Uh, the yellow area is where we're going to have quasi-judicial decisions, and these are more, um, well, I'd say some of the bread too, is probably very little discretion and can be more administrative. Okay, so for a comprehensive plan amendment, again, we just had one, so I won't spend too much time on this, but, um, it is to be expected that there will be times where we receive new information where we want to amend our comprehensive plan. And so some general considerations to keep in mind when reviewing these requests is, is the request consistent with our goals and objections of the overall plan? Um, are, what are the impacts on public facilities and services, such as roads and other infrastructure? And particularly if there's really not a way to mitigate that impact, that might be a concern. Uh, potential for resulting development to create an undue impact on adjacent properties. And then development should still fit the physical character of the neighborhood or improve overall viability. So, um, we typically have, uh, a bit more, um, laid out for our staff report based on, um, other considerations. But generally, if you are comfortable with how it fits within those, then you, it may make sense to approve that comprehensive plan amendment. For, as, yep, zoning ordinance amendment, um, we have two types. There is a math amendment, and so this changes, uh, the district, a zoning district boundary. So that's either, um, maybe you're adding to an existing, uh, zoning district um, or simply just taking a piece of property, um, and changing that zoning district on that property. So it might be a larger decision to add, to make the existing area larger, or it might be that we're just, we're gonna go a different direction in this part of town. We have text amendments, so this is changes to our district regulations or other performance. So this is changes to our district regulations or other performance standards. So for example, having a new use, such as agribusinesses, added to the, to a district is considered a text amendment. Again, this is a legislative decision. And overall, it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If you have a zoning ordinance amendment that is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, you need to back up and fix your comprehensive plan to move forward, or you should deny the zoning ordinance amendment. And overall, it should not be have, any zoning ordinance amendment should not have a detrimental impact to the immediate neighborhood or community as a whole, the natural environment. Again, that can't be addressed through mitigation. There are a lot of mitigation strategies. So there, it's a fine line to consider. And then the city's ability to provide efficient public facilities or services should also not be impacted by a zoning ordinance amendment.
May I ask just one quick question before we move on? We've had some trouble with that word detrimental impact, right, when it, it comes to defining that. So, and I know that law is language, right? But when, if you were going to parse out or flush out detrimental impact, explaining it to neighbors, right? What is the, what would be the legislative or legal sort of definition of detrimental impact?
Yeah, it's a great question. It is, it can be subjective to some extent. But I would say a detrimental impact is you are losing the ability to function on your property entirely, essentially. So to have a nightclub put right next to you, and you're in a rural residential area, and you're not immediately adjacent to in a club that's going until four in the morning. And I would say that that probably could be detrimental because it's just, it's not consistent with the overall area. It, but it, unfortunately, it is a bit subjective. There isn't a clear standard. I think the other, what we tried to do in our code, though, is, you know, we try to tie it back to things like property values. What's difficult with property values is if you don't have a lot of clear data to be able to say, "Yep, this is going to decrease property value, or this is going to increase property value." I would say a lot of the uses that we have in front of us, we wouldn't consider it a detrimental impact because even if you find, like, gas stations, for example, when they, the studies that have been done, it doesn't show that the property values go down. It's just that they increase less than other properties that are further away from a gas station. So it's not detrimental. But there might be a situation where there might be data to support that such a situation would be detrimental because it made the properties around it valued at half of what it was before, something like that. That would, I think, would be closer to the detrimental. That would, couldn't be mitigated. But simply having your property values increase at a slower rate, that I don't think would be considered detrimental.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, we could, I could certainly do a little bit more digging on that. But it, I believe our code tries to, when we talk about our CUPs, tries to kind of give you some guidance as to what would be detrimental. And then what you would want to do as a city is use every ability to attach stipulations to try to mitigate those potential impacts before you say that it's not allowable.
Okay.
I have one question, and maybe getting a little off-topic. But are there some things that could be very detrimental to the community that we don't, as a city, don't have any control over? And here's an example. So when my husband and I first bought our property back in 83, literally, we soon found out that Hennepin County was looking at Strayler Road to site a landfill. And they had a public meeting. A lot of people showed up, obviously, very concerned about it. They luckily did not end up citing a landfill there. They decided to build the incinerator in north Minneapolis, or north downtown there. But I think that was maybe something the city had no control over because it was led by Hennepin County?
I don't, I don't know the history on that. I don't know that I was here for that particular request. But the, right now, our code does not allow, we have a couple of districts where we would allow for a recycling center, but we would, don't have anywhere that we would allow for a landfill.
But the county doesn't have, like, the power to come in and supersede the city's zoning?
Not to my knowledge. They could potentially do it as part of a zoning ordinance amendment.
Which would have to go through the process.
Right, exactly. So, and they might be able to mitigate it to some extent. I mean, we do, as a region, we do need landfills. So I would assume that if every city just said, "No more landfills," then it might pressure the state to all of a sudden have to kind of override the municipal planning aspect of that. But I don't know that, I don't believe that's a protected use. We do have some uses that they have done that. So for an example, a protected use would be residential, there's someone trying to get in, if you could let them in. Residential homes, so for people, not residential homes, the group homes, there we go, residential group homes. We, if we allow for single-family homes in a district, we cannot prevent a group home from going into that district. We can, to some extent, require a license, such as a rental license or a lodging license, depending on how many people are in the group home. But we cannot prevent it because it was one of those situations where cities started, to my understanding, cities started not allowing them. And it caused such a crisis that the city just said, "No, you can't decide to do that." So it does happen. And cities do want to be careful about simply not allowing it. I think, like, we don't allow storage facilities in the city, and I don't think, that is not a protected use. Well, we don't allow any more new ones anyways. And that's not a protected use, so we're fine there. And I think we have done our, comparing us to other cities, we have way more acreage of storage facilities than our neighbors. So I think we have done our fair share. But theoretically, if it became such an issue where no more storage units were being created, then yeah, the state could potentially say, "Well, we need more storage units. There is a huge demand for this." And could just all of a sudden make it so that we can't regulate that through zoning. So it's a fine line.
Well, a good example is the cannabis. We have to, we can't say it's not an allowed use in the city. And we had to find the zoning and create the ordinance related to what was at least a minimum set out by the state. And that wasn't, that wasn't a city-led initiative.
Good example.
Yep. Yeah, so again, so it's like, we want to be careful as cities to not abuse it. And to make, and again, if there's other people in the region that are offering those uses, then I think it's less of a concern. It becomes more of an issue when all of a sudden everybody in the area is preventing these uses from being created. Then we might get some pushback later on. So yeah, that's zoning ordinance amendment. Rezoning is a zoning ordinance amendment. It's the same as the map amendment, but sometimes we will call it rezoning. So again, if the, it does need to be consistent with our future land use map in our comprehensive plan when we decide to change the zoning district on a underlying, or on a property. And so, and I would also just say on this slide, spot zoning is something that the city does need to avoid. So this is zoning a single piece of property completely out of context and out of compatibility with the surrounding areas. So you will see areas of residential areas, all of a sudden, on the corner of a collector road, there is a small strip mall. That is not spot zoning. It is determined that two major roads, even if it's surrounded by residential, is compatible with a neighborhood commercial area. But to put a two-acre industrial site in the middle of a residential area, that would likely be spot zoning. So it really depends on the compatibility and the surrounding context. But you do want to avoid spot zoning. You don't want to simply decide in a residential area to put a single warehouse building. That does not make sense. Okay, so for a variance, I've talked about this briefly before with the discretion. But this is a zoning relief mechanism that approves a departure from the standard ordinances. And a variance may be granted when there are practical difficulties, but approval is not required. And economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. And so we do have a lot of variance requests that I would say are based on economic considerations that staff typically will recommend denial for. So I would say staff's probably harder on the analysis of variances than, than our city council. But, you know, it can, again, there is some subjectivity. But personally, for me, I don't like to really recommend moving forward with a variance process unless the applicant can tie it back to a physical constraint of the law. Sometimes that's not quite what gets pushed forward, but that's typically what I would want to see from the staff level before I recommend approval. Use variance are specifically not allowed in Minnesota. And I will stipulate this a bit further, that what I mean by this is if a use is not currently allowed within the district, you cannot grant a variance to allow a use to go in, that just, that use to go in the district. So that, we, when we talk about variances, it's more to the, like, the bulk standards, the, those kinds of standards that would be what we would grant a variance to. We don't grant it to uses. If we want to allow the use in the district, we have to do a zoning ordinance amendment. And I'll also say, if we have a lot of variances for the same thing, it suggests that we should be doing a zoning ordinance amendment as well. There's a bit of disagreement on whether or not a variance can set a precedent or not. For the most part, variances do not set a precedent. However, they can set a precedent for applications with similar facts and within the same timeframe. So if we grant a setback variance
For a deck.
For a deck, because the lot is weirdly shaped, maybe. And then a neighbor nearby also has a very similarly shaped lot, could theoretically ask for a same variance. And if it's within, I would say, a one-year period or so, we really should approve that as well if that was the findings of fact that we based the variance on. Now, if it's further out in time, like, let's say it's three years later or something like that, I think we have a bit more standing to be like, "Actually, we learned from that variance, and we don't want to keep granting it." We do have some ability to say that we've learned from previous mistakes. But I have seen some land use lawyers say that there is somewhat of a precedent set when it's within a very similar timeframe and it has the same findings of fact. So just something to keep in mind. Again, for variance, prior criteria for review, this is an area in our code that needs to be revised and updated to match the state language. When I do variance staff reports, I do kind of slip in the state standards within what we have when we complete our review. But this would be something I would like to have updated. On the state level, the criteria for review is property will be used in a reasonable manner. There are circumstances unique to the property, not caused by the land owner or their predecessor. And unique circumstances are typically interpreted to include physical characteristics, as I've said. So the wetlands, slopes, odd shapes. And the variance must not alter the essential character of the locality. And then conditions can be applied to a variance if granted, but must be directly related to the impact created by the variance. So we can't require, what would be a good example? We can't require
Additional landscaping on an area where we're not also granting a variance on setback?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, we can't require additional landscaping if, I mean, I would say that's actually something that we typically do require when we're, for most variants, we want to kind of buffer it from, like, whatever we're granting the deviation. We want to make it so it's not very visible. But like, we, an example of when we maybe wouldn't include a variance for landscaping for buffering is if it's not really visible.
Or if it was, I remember one application where it was the request for the additional landscaping wouldn't have been on this, the property line where the setback was.
Right.
So you can't say, "Well, I want it all in the back."
Yeah, I want, I want, I want you to, I want you to do landscaping in the front yard, but you're asking for
A rear setback.
Yeah, yeah. So it needs to be directly related. There needs to be a nexus. Conditional use permits are super fun. They are an anticipated and allowed use within the zoning ordinance, but conditions may need to be added. We have, some conditional uses in our zoning districts already have some conditions that they need to meet that are clearly outlined. And then the city can also add additional conditions in addition to that. Conditions such as buffers and screening can make the use more compatible, but the use may not be appropriate on sites where these conditions can't be met. With a CUP, you cannot attach a time limit. These run with the land in perpetuity unless a condition is violated. That is really what would be a triggering point. And it would have to go through a revocation hearing if there was something to be violated with the CUP approvals.
And that hearing is with the city attorney?
The hearing would, city council, I believe.
City council.
Yep, yep. And then, it's like, the city council can choose to revoke it, yes. But again, it has to be something called out in the resolution as a condition. Again, not, I would say, maybe as stringent as the nexus required for variances, but conditions that are added must be reasonable and directly related to the use. I think we have a little bit more flexibility compared to a variance, just in terms of how that's discussed in some statutes. But you do want it to match with, "Okay, we are concerned about this impact, so adding this condition will address that impact." So a CUP must be approved if reasonable conditions make the use compatible with the existing neighborhood, conform with the comprehensive plan, and meets the applicable standards within the zoning code. Findings of fact for denial of a CUP must explain why conditions cannot mitigate the impact of the use on that specific site and cannot be so broad that it could be concluded that there is not a reasonable pathway forward for the use to be located within the zoning district in which it is allowed. So for example, if we were to say that a nursery, which is allowed by a CUP in the rural residential, or greenhouse, or like a retail greenhouse, if we were to say that we aren't going to approve the CUP because the, we are, become aware of potential pollution that has happened to other greenhouse sites in the city, that would not be a finding of fact that would really be helpful if that were to be contested in court because it suggests that any greenhouse would have that concern. It's not site-specific. And suggests that there is not a reasonable pathway forward for approval within the zoning district itself. So we have, when we approve a CUP, it really does need to be a reason why this site does not work, why it cannot be, why conditions cannot address the impacts that granting approval would result in. Interim use permits are very similar to a CUP, but it has a sunset clause. We have a few examples of these in the Corcoran zoning code, but this is actually wrong. That's my, whoops. Accessory dwelling units used to be IUPs, so that is a typo on my end. But we have conditional home occupation licenses. Very confusing in how it's named because you would think it's a CUP, but it's not. It is an IUP because we have a three-year time limit where city can review and potentially, potentially have, they aren't meeting their requirements. It's not as hard as a CUP to have it revoked. And additionally, we can tie other time stipulations, such as if they were to sell the property, then at that point, the license expires. Temporary living quarters are also an IUP. And we have a few other examples as well. I think we have like a farmer's market in one of our mixed-use districts that we have as an IUP. So again, an IUP should be granted when the use conforms to the zoning regulations, the use is temporary, and will terminate on a specific date or event. And the city will not incur additional costs by granting the use approval. And the applicant, this is an interesting line that's included in state legislation. The applicant agrees to the conditions. So it's kind of, I don't know why they specifically call that out for an IUP. But I guess if the applicant does not agree to the conditions, then you should not approve it. For preliminary plats, these can, again, this is how we process our subdivisions. This is, a preliminary plat is going to include, really what we're looking at is the lots, but it's also the proposed street and the layout of the lots, lot sizes and dimensions, the easements, existing streets, location map, general contours. So this is really the first step in a subdivision process. Preliminary plats have an automatic 120 Preliminary plats have an automatic 120-day review, and it's the only application that has a automatic 120-day review period, everything else has a 60-day review period per state statute. And then the final plat is really where all of the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat are addressed, and you have the final layout, and that is what gets just approved by council. So the planning commission will take a look at the preliminary plat, it's really your chance to see, see and discuss where it may or may not comply with city ordinances. And then once we get to the final plat, then it's, I wouldn't say a rubber stamp, but it's much more just confirming that all the, all the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat have been met.
There can be some changes made between preliminary plat and final plat though, correct?
Yeah, so typically the changes that you see though are because of conditions of approval, and so the changes that can be made are to accommodate the conditions of approval essentially. I would say that you can increase the amount of, or sorry, decrease the amount of lots without it really needing to start over, but once it's, there's a material change, and typically that's an increase in lots or something more significant, like, oh, now we're going to remove 23 homes and we're going to put a whole bunch of duplexes or something. And I think if that were to be the case, then you wouldn't want to have it go back to the preliminary plats. At the very least, and then the preliminary plat approvals. But yeah, there are, there are typically changes, but again, I would say the most changes that we're usually seeing are because it's, we're trying to get the conditions of approval finalized. Plat approvals can only be conditioned on compliance with items contained in our guiding documents, and it has to be what's in place at the time of a complete semittal. Provisions of public improvements or financial guarantees, and satisfaction of objections raised by other government agencies. So for the most part, if it's a preliminary plat that does not have any variance request, we are very limited in what additional stipulations we can add to that application. I would say, for the most part, what we do see in practice is there's one or two variances, and so that's where we usually get to maybe a negotiation of how we can condition something a bit beyond what you would do for something that does not have a variance. For site plan review, this is a review of a rendering, drawing, sketch of a proposed project's design and layout on a single parcel typically, and can be required of allowed indoor conditional uses. We require site plan review for anything that is not agriculture or a single-family home. Everything else, yeah, I would say everything else does require site plan review in our city code. So even if it's a permitted business in our commercial district, they still have to go through the site plan process. So we are looking at the consistency of the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinances, relationship to nearby uses, locations and dimensions of buildings, proposed grading and contours, screening and landscaping, utilities, parking, access, lighting and signage. So this is, let's say the plat is usually a very, it's a more macro overview, and then when we get to the site plan, it's much more a specific lot. And then another common application that we see is planned unit development, and this usually come, this does come in tandem with plats, so I think that's why a lot of the times we think that we have more, especially when we're dealing with a lot of planned unit developments, and all of a sudden we have a straight plat, and it's, I think sometimes as a city, we get a little confused as to what we can stipulate, because of most of what we have approved in our suburban area has been a part of a planned unit development. That's not always true, we have some examples of some straight plats now that have been approved, but, and we have straight plats in our rural residential area all the time, but especially with our large, our largest developments in the city have been planned unit developments. So a PUD is a specific rezoning request, and it reviews several buildings under uses as a unit, so it also acts as a site plan approval as well. And then this is a zoning district that is outlined in section 1040 dot 140, and the city went through a intensive process to really update our standards for PUD, and I would say we have probably some of the most stringent PUD standards in the state. Not that it's a bad thing, but that, that is, we wanted to make sure that it was resulting in development that truly had public benefits. And so the idea of a planned unit development is to promote creativity and efficient use of land. Also, I would say that the theory behind PUDs is that we, by the time we have written our ordinances, they're probably out of date. So the PUD allows for adaption to market demands on the fly a bit more than what our standard ordinances will usually allow for. So again, it allows flexibility in regulations, and can also allow for a mix of compatible land uses. It is useful for very difficult sites with many natural resources, where compliance with by right zoning can be difficult, or, so I would say when we have more than one or two variances, it probably makes sense to have a PUD, because if we have a site that's so challenging that it would need five variances or something like that, you might as well just kind of start to negotiate a new planning district. And it should provide benefits to the city, so public benefit again is a huge component of the planned unit development. So the theory being that the city and users of the site and neighboring residents have some kind of benefit that would not have been obtained through straight zoning alone. And this is a legislative decision as well.
And just to visit that second to last bullet point, because I remember, and we haven't had quite as many PUDs in the last couple of years, but the defining a benefit, similar to defining a detriment. A city benefit, when, when that language is in there, it's, it's viewed not as an individual resident would consider a benefit, but what the city considers a benefit.
Yeah, what the, so the city is supposed to be acting in the community's interest at large, and so that might include like, so where it might seem like, oh, well, that's not the city's benefit, that's not a benefit to the resident because it's the city that's saving money. I would argue it is still a benefit to the resident because it's saving taxpayer dollars.
So yeah, it's, but things like streets, stoplights are considered, they would fall into the category of benefit.
I would say, infrastructure has, has not typically been something that our current council has defined as a public benefit. There was a time where significant road improvements, or sometimes significant utility improvements were considered a public benefit, so I believe like Revonia, there was probably some of that for Revonia and Tavera, and I believe even Bowweather, but then there has been a departure from that. And so to, to your point, the public benefit aspect.
Is fluid.
Well, it, it was very fluid, and then we established a policy now where we have identified, I believe, 27 public benefits that we want to see. There is still some ability for someone to come in at a concept level and say, what about this? This wasn't included in your, your policy, but what do you think about including this as a potential public benefit? So there is still some ability to have that, but not without also including some of the public benefits that we've identified, and infrastructure is not currently something that's on that list.
And, and I guess this is not, but I think about that list, because I remember that when we were in the middle of doing that, and like some of the things arguably like are in the greater states legislative are less an immediate benefit as they once were. For example, the charging stations, right? With some of the shifting that's happening in other governments, like that's not necessarily as, as much of a benefit. So I guess my question related to PUDs is, how often will we be reviewing that list of like 26? Like what does that process look like if all of a sudden, five years from now, we're like, hey, actually, those things we outlined as benefits, there's that shift again, and we're trying to look at what?
Yeah, so I think as much as the city would like to, we could theoretically review it. I think the charging stations, you're probably talking about the Northeast standard, so it's not a public benefit, but that's just an underlying standard of the Northeast district, and they have a list of like eight resiliency strategies, so they don't have to do EV chargers. We have seen a couple of developments that have chosen that as one. So that, that's a little different than the PUD standards. I think we do have one standard that would allow for incorporation of new technologies.
Okay, but it's not specific to a particular.
Yeah, it's not specific to a particular technology, correct. Okay, so some underlying procedures to keep in mind. We, as a city, do use Robert's Rules of Order for our meeting procedures, but we do this fairly, fairly informally for the most part, and, but the idea behind Robert's Rules is it keeps meetings fair and organized and efficient, and makes sure everyone has a chance to speak while helping the group make clear decisions. So that is something that we do try to follow as much as possible, even if we kind of deviate from it at times. And then the open meeting law is something that is a state law, meaning that our meetings must be open to the public. Whenever there is a quorum of planning commissioners, it is considered an open meeting law. So if you, if three of you were to go to the same city event, we have to post for that as a public meeting, even if it's not our typical planning commission meeting, because once we have a quorum, it's technically an open meeting. This also applies to our communications over email, and things like, or just communications in general, and that's why you'll see that we tend to, we should be blind see seeing you on emails that go out to the planning commissioners in general, so that you don't have a chance of hitting reply all, and now we have a quorum of planning commissioners. So if you do ever see that, you've received an email and you can see all the rest of the planning commissioners, please don't hit reply all, it was a mistake. And then we also have in Minnesota a 60-day rule, and we have to comply with it. So this is simply that any land use application that the city receives, which could be as simple as, I believe even building permits are subject to it, we have to make a final decision on within 60 days. We, with the exception of preliminary plats, which have that automatic 120-day review period, also the city can grant itself a one-time extension of an additional 60 days, but then once that's exhausted, there is no ability for us to extend it, but the applicant could grant the city as many additional extensions as they desire. So it's really a rule that's meant to protect the applicant in terms of making sure that they receive a final decision within a timely manner. But that's why sometimes it'll feel like decisions are being rushed, and I think that's a common complaint from the public, like, oh, we're just finding out about this now, is because we are working on a very small timeline to get these done. For the meeting procedure, so typically for an item, the chair will announce the agenda item and clearly state the subject, and staff will have a small presentation. If there's a public hearing, we do need to formally open the public hearing, take any testimony, and close the public hearing, and we do that with a vote. Not all cities close the public hearing with a vote, but we do, and so that's important that we make sure we honor that step. After that, we typically have clarifying questions, so this might be questions that the commission has of staff, this is also an opportunity for staff to clarify any questions that may have come up during the public hearing testimony. And then how it should go per Robert's Rules is at that point, we should have, the chair should invite a motion, and that motion should be seconded, and then we should go into discussion. That is not how we typically do it, and it's not how city council does it either, to be fair, but theoretically, my understanding is you actually want a motion on the floor before you really get into deep discussion. But that's why I say we follow these loosely.
We can go that route, it might carve some time off, but.
Well, I think that's the idea, is like, you kind of, kind of start with that, so that you have, understand, really the discussion on the table is, do we want to recommend approval?
Right, are we all already in agreement?
Right, yeah, instead of, well, and sometimes, like, especially since this can happen at city council all the time, we'll spend hours revising a resolution just for it to get denied when we finally get to the motion and the vote. So it's, or it just, it simply doesn't pass. So I think it's supposed to kind of set it up a bit better, so you're a bit more efficient. I don't, like, I haven't really seen this actually get applied, so whether or not it's more efficient?
I don't know.
Couldn't tell you. So anyways, after all have spoken, have had a chance to speak during the discussion, and the chair repeats the motion on the floor, and the chair calls for a vote on the item. And then the options are yes or a, or I, sorry, no, or to abstain. However, extension should be used on a very limited basis. Commissioners should have a sound reason for choosing not to vote, as their vote for recommendation is a crucial duty of being a planning commissioner. So examples of why someone might want to abstain include a conflict of interest, and this is, I think I get into this a little bit later, but this, there's a, it's typically a conflict of interest is when you have usually a financial interest, you would set to gain, to benefit financially if this were to be approved or denied, so you really shouldn't vote if that's the case. And then, or just a feeling that you lack the information needed to make an informed vote. I do my very best so that that is never the reason, but that would be theoretically a reason where an abstention makes sense.
If you do abstain, do you have to give a reason?
You don't, I would just say, it's not like we're going to really, I don't believe you have to. There might be, an applicant might ask for reasoning, I believe, I could ask the city attorneys to clarify on that. We've had, we've had city councils votes where there's been abstentions before, and we have not asked for the reasoning. However, I would say the issue would be probably something that comes up more, like if someone is constantly abstaining, then that suggests that they are not fulfilling their duties as a planning commissioner, and so at that point, then it might become more of an issue to be like, we need to understand why you're not voting on items and choosing to just not vote. So I think if you're just doing it truly because you're trying to make the best decision with what you understand, it really should happen on a very limited basis, so I don't think it'd cause an issue. It'd really be that person that's using it, that's abusing it, that would probably be where we would have to figure out how to handle it as a city. So, and then the chair announces the results of the vote. Chair seeks clarification from individual members on their votes if necessary, so if we didn't hear it, maybe there was a couple people who voted I or voted name, we might need to understand who voted what, and then sometimes, especially with a denial, is we would, we have, not necessarily always, but we have kind of gone down the road to explain why it was denied. I think that happens more on the city council level, but that does happen. Yeah, I think that's about there. Okay, legally defensible decisions, so this is, this is the record that we have to set up, this is what evidence in the record, this is, if we were to get sued on a land use decision, this is what, this is usually why staff recommending something that might not be very popular, is because we're trying to set the city up for the most legally defensible decision. So there is things to keep in mind, such as the subject matter jurisdiction, I don't know why I said decision, I'm sorry, subject matter jurisdiction, so this is, did the body decide a matter that it is empowered by statute or ordinance to act on? And the record should reflect that. And then use of proper procedures, did the body follow open meeting law, public notice, the public hearing, in order to have a proper record set up. Application of property standards, so did the body apply the proper standards in making their decision? So that's why we should refer to the standards that we have outlined for CUPs or plat review when we add conditions. And then the rational basis for the decision, so this, if a court's looking at this, they should be able to answer, if a court's looking at this, they want to know that could a reasonable person have reached the same conclusion? And then evidence in the record, do the facts in the records of the proceedings support the decision? So if all of the facts in the record really support an approval, and at the very end we just decided as city, we're not going to prove it because we don't like it, that would not be legally defensible decisions. So it is important that we go through each step, and again, this is probably why the staff is recommending, or even may be airing on recommendation for, not even, I don't want to say air, but recommend, recommending approval for something that might not be very popular for the community, just because we're, we believe that there are reasons that suggest that it is the most legally defensible decision to approve it, but that doesn't necessarily. But that doesn't necessarily mean that things couldn't come up during the public hearing or during the deliberations that could change that recommendation. So it's just as far, based on the facts that we have during our technical review, we would recommend approval because of, you know, how we're applying the ordinances and things like that. So this is kind of where some of that tension, I think, comes from, trying to set us up for success.
Quick question, and it takes, intertwines into this slide as well as the last, is that we typically have always given the applicant time to speak, and that is not actually a part of the Robert's Rules necessarily, is it? I just remember one tense meeting where an applicant was denied the opportunity to speak. And, and I, I don't know if that is considered use of proper procedure, or is that, is that a scenario where then somebody could ultimately say, you didn't give me my, public hearing was open, public hearing was closed?
Yeah, so the public hearing is not usually for the applicant. No, sometimes the applicants get confused and they stand up during the public hearing, and we're just kind of like, okay, that's fine. But typically, we do, if they would like a chance to speak, we do honor that. I do think that that, it really should be honored, to have them a chance to answer questions and just kind of say their five-minute spiel. I can look at the Robert's Rules on it. I guess I don't know off the top of my head if there is something specific on there about having an applicant speak, but I do know typically as a city, we do let them speak. So to largely depart and kind of be, have it be discretionary, I do think is dangerous, because we have a history of letting applicants speak without making a formal determination that we're not going to let applicants speak. And I don't see what the benefit of that would be at that point. Then, I, I would recommend that we follow our processes from the past.
Sure.
Yeah. I do think at a certain point, the chair and the commission have already stated the deliberation's over, we have a motion on the floor, we're going to take a vote. We don't have to, you don't have to keep having a back and forth with the applicant, especially if it's not going anywhere. But I do think it's important to have that initial chance to speak.
Sure.
And there's usually a time limit on it anyways, so. No, there's not a time limit for the applicant necessarily. But again, if they're being, if they're being.
Argumentative.
If they're being argumentative, our, our.
Disrespectful.
Yeah, we have a different policy in place that we could enact if that was the case, yeah. But the, but yeah, the applicant doesn't really have a time limit because there might be some back and forth with questions that they might be better poised to answer than staff, so. So also, yeah, people may bring up valid concerns during the public hearing. But when the city officials simply don't like something, they should defer to applying the ordinances written. So there might be, there might be something that's like, oh, well, the traffic, or something like that. That's always a valid concern, and we do our best to study that and mitigate that through the development process. And, but if you simply don't like it, and there really isn't a concern that, if there isn't a concern that, that cannot be mitigated. Yeah, if there is a concern that cannot be mitigated, that would be a valid reason.
Or if evidence has shown that the application isn't what the application is by a neighbor who comes in, then.
Actually, actually, I'm about to get to that.
Okay.
So hold on, I'm bad, put a pin in that. That, that can, I might even have it in here, maybe on the next slide. But yeah, so valid concerns can get brought up during the public hearing, and we should have a discussion how to mitigate it. And then, when in doubt, apply the ordinances written. And Huit et All versus the City of Minneapolis. I bring this up because it is an example of what not to do as a planning commissioner. You do not want to make up your mind prior to the public hearing. You want to be open to the evidence presented at the hearing. And you do not want, and I would say that when we say hearing, we're also talking about not just the public hearing with comments from the public, but also the staff report, as well as the applicant's also testimony during the discussion. You do not want to advocate for or against a matter for which there will be a public hearing after the public hearing. I believe planning commissioners might be able to have a bit more flexibility in that, but city council should still be very careful until they have their public meeting date. And you want to remain an impartial decision maker. Whoops. So you do really want to be careful about having your mind made up before you come to the meeting. You might be leaning a certain way, and that's normal and human. But you want to have the openness to change your mind should some additional evidence be presented. Okay, I'm trying to figure out where, I had a note in here about that. You want to make sure to, that you are basing your decisions on information that is presented at the public hearing to an extent. Hearsay, though, I would be very careful about, because we sometimes have people who try to weaponize code enforcement and things like that, or try to say that they called the city, but there's no record of this call, there's no record of a code enforcement complaint. So I would just, their hearsay can be challenging to base a decision on. There have been times where someone has, I think there was a public hearing at one point where someone had said that he doesn't even live at this property.
Yes, that's the one I'm referring to.
And, but that, you as a commission did great with that. You, you made a decision really not based on that hearsay. What happened is I looked into it, and I found evidence that, that suggested he wasn't living at the property. And I, and so then I talked to him outside of the meeting and explained that the application type he was applying for was not the correct application type, that he would need to go under a different application type.
Okay.
And he did not want to do that, so he withdrew his application. But the city making a decision based on hearsay is, is tricky, so.
Sure.
So that.
Well, and you don't want to, might, the other concern that arose from that is that you don't want to encourage a mob sort of, like spying on your neighbors, that.
Right, exactly.
Right.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that application in particular that you're talking about was a very challenging application, and I think the other thing with that is there, there are another difference with that versus some, another application that was reviewed recently, where similar complaints were brought up. But the difference being, code enforcement did get involved, and code enforcement had its own pictures and data to support what was being said at the public forum. It wasn't just someone saying, oh, well, they're hosting services at this location, when we don't have any evidence of that. Yeah, so that's what, so there's, I guess, just the difference between evidence and documented incidences versus hearsay. Not to say that what they're saying is incorrect, it's just that we didn't have any evidence as a city to support that.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that was it, I'm trying to just, I thought there was another note, but we're just going to move on. So important to avoid, kind of going again to what not to do. Advocating for a position until all information has been submitted. Ex parte contact, so that is contact between you all. It's okay for you to speak with one other commissioner, particularly, especially on agenda items. You could probably reach out to one other commissioner, but as soon as you start reaching out to more than that, it starts to cross that line. And it's also just discussions between decision makers beyond the quasi judicial hearing. Board members are required to base their decision on evidence presented during the hearing, relying on information provided elsewhere could violate due process rights. So that's, that was the note I was trying to find. And then fundamental fairness dictates that all parties are informed of all facts, so. Just so, yeah, ex parte communication, so it's just, I would say be careful talking about planning commission items before the meeting. I think that's generally the, generally the consensus, but if you do have questions, you can always refer to contact staff. And you want to also avoid making personal comments that may be derogatory. Conflicts of interest. This, particularly conflicts where there are obvious that the potential appointee's own personal interest is so distinct from the public interest that the member cannot be expected to represent the public interest fairly. So again, that typically is tied back to a financial, like, if you, let's say we had a developer on the planning commission, and his company is the applicant. He should not be voting, he should be abstaining from that vote, because he stands to benefit from the outcome of that application. So that would mean unlikely to happen, but that would be, that'd be an extreme example. It might be more likely that there's a realtor, and maybe she has a contract or something with the developer to sell those homes, and, or is in line to do that, and they should probably abstain. I think that that would be something that, it might be a little bit more likely. And yeah, discussing projects in meetings on social media can get you in a bit of trouble. So I would be careful with that particular, again, before the public hearing. Okay, so the Parks and Trails Commission training session had a, like, a quick session on how to read plans, I thought was really interesting, like, oh, I probably should be doing that. I want to give you some quick tips on how to understand a site plan. So first, you want to start with the title block. This will tell you what the site plan is for, with the proposed development, the address of the parcel or location, the scale, and who prepared it and the data was prepared. And so that just kind of helps kind of orient yourself as to what you're looking at. I also find it's really helpful right away to look for the north arrow to understand how the site stimulate, or the site is laid out. One example of where this really came necessary was with the Hope Development. Their plans, just due to the site layout, north was not where you expected it to be. So I would definitely look for that north arrow first, because it might be flipped, just because it makes more sense on the paper. And then, once you have an idea of the north arrow and the scale bar to kind of get an idea on how, on how to estimate the distances, the next thing I'd look for is identifying the property lines. You want to look for bold or dashed boundary lines. They show the legal limits of the property, so they'll typically show the existing limits. And then, there'll be a slightly different type of line that will show the new limits after right of way has been dedicated. And then, it's also really important to understand what these symbols mean. And not every plan is going to have the legend on it. Sometimes it's on the cover page, so it's really easy to flip past that. But that is really important. And I also say, there are many times where I have a symbol that's not on the legend. And when that happens, if you were to ever notice that, feel free to reach out. It's probably something I've already worked through with the developer. Usually, it's because they're using a template that they didn't update when they had to add a new symbol. It is really frustrating when I'm looking, like, where is this? Or like, there's symbols that are not on the plan, or there's something on the plan that's not in the legend, so that can happen. But I first start with looking at the legend. I would say 90% of the time, it's probably okay. But 10% of the time that it's not, it is very frustrating and time-consuming, so feel free to reach out to me if that happens. And then next, you want to look for structures, labels, and notes. So the buildings are usually shown as solid shapes with labels like house, garage, or proposed building. And you want to pay attention to size, location, and orientation. And then words on the plans can explain things like the fence height, or the retaining wall height, or the setback, or where the signs are going. So I think sometimes you can, even I, like, we can overlook, there might be just a little note that actually might answer a lot of your questions. So once you kind of get down to the microscopic level, definitely look for those labels and notes. Look for roads, driveways, sidewalks, trails, and utilities. Utilities, we typically have a utility plan by itself. And I'd say for the most part, you can probably skip it, but sometimes it's helpful to know where the utilities are, because it might explain why, why there's a certain layout, or why there might be an easement somewhere. So that might provide that additional context. But the utilities are more analyzed by our engineering public works down. Check for parking and access points. Whoops, sorry. These are typically shaded, or, I'm sorry, no, that's the roads. So for parking and access, you want to look for marked park installs, drive aisles, loading zones, and any labeled ADA spaces. So noted the design makes sense for how people will access the site. So sometimes I think we've seen that where, like, the access really doesn't make sense with how the building's orientated, and I think that's a fair, even if it's not something that we may be able to condition it on, it's a fair critique to ask. And the applicant might also be able to explain why it's being set up that way. Locate natural features, contours, and landscaping. So trees, ponds, slopes, or wetlands may be shown, are generally shown. And landscaping areas are often shaded green or marked with plant symbols. We typically have a landscaping plan by itself to help kind of keep it separated, because otherwise, trying to put everything on one plan can be very overwhelming. They're already very overwhelming as they are. And then, note the setbacks and easements that are shown. These typically are additional dashed lines, separate from the property lines. But those are also something to keep in mind. The setbacks in specific are something that I typically spend a lot of time looking at. The drainage utility easements are something that, for the most part, are fairly standard on the lots. And also cover the drainage, I'm sorry, cover wetland areas. And so I don't know that you necessarily need to be too concerned about the placement of easements, but it might again explain why there's, why this lot is shaped like this, because we needed a building area, because most of it is an easement due to wetlands or something like that. And then, yes, ask questions when you are unsure. Things do come up, and I am available, Dwight is available, to let you, let you know if something isn't making sense, or not let you know, to answer your questions when you let us know if something isn't making sense on the plan set. So these are just, I can send out these slides, too. These are just kind of some examples, like, of plans that have been marked up to kind of give you an example. So the DNU easements for a lot are going to usually be a perimeter line that kind of goes around the property line. The property lot lines are going to have like these standard skinny but non-dashed line. We have, and then it's helpful to understand which side of the street has the sidewalk when you're thinking of the overall flow of the site. And then, we have something else that we commonly see, stormwater pond is shown right here. Sometimes a trail corridor will be a bit darkened compared to the sidewalks. And then, we have, most properties in the city will have wetlands. And then, we additionally also have a wetland buffer regulation that gets added on once a property subdivides, so we'll have that kind of vegetated area that hugs the wetland. And then, there's also a wetland structure setback. So on the side, you can kind of see, there's the setback line that is really far from the other, the rear property line, and that's because there's a wetland structure setback, so. In addition to the typical rear setback. I think that's just more of the same. So contours also sometimes give you a bit more context than, and can be easily overlooked. But it might explain, oh, right here, there's a six-foot drop. It might also explain why a retaining wall is needed. It also can tell you, if you look at the existing condition survey compared to the grading plan, it can tell you, oh, wow, they are really doing a lot of grading to level the site. And so that's some context that you can get from contours. Not that we would deny a property because of the change in contours, as long as it meets engineering requirements. But again, it just helps to understand context. And if it is a PUD or something where we do have a lot of discretion, that could be something you might wonder, is there any way to keep some of these slopes? Because that is, that helps add to the character of the site instead of leveling it. That has been a discussion in the past, I believe it was a discussion with Quigley Highlands, so. This is an example of a tree survey. So if we have a tree inventory, the red trees, it's typically shown in red. It would be all the trees that are being removed. The green trees are the ones that are being saved. And then, we'll typically have a landscaping plan on top of that that shows the new trees to be planted. So yeah, those are just some quick examples of plants. Hopefully, that was a little helpful. And then let me know if any questions do come up, because I, again, you don't need to complete a technical review, but it is still helpful to look through the plans and let me know if something isn't quite adding up. Okay, and I also wanted to briefly touch on the comprehensive plan process, because this is coming up. So as a city within the Twin Cities metropolitan area, Corcoran must adopt a new comprehensive plan every 10 years, subject to approval by the Metropolitan Council. And the commission will be heavily involved in this process. And so, just a quick sidebar on the Metropolitan Council. The Minnesota Legislature. The Minnesota Legislature established the Metropolitan Council in nineteen sixty-seven to specifically address the planning and development of the seven counties, including one hundred and eighty-two cities that make up the Twin Cities metropolitan area. The initial intent when it was established was to address issues that were not being adequately handled by individual cities and towns during a time of rapid growth. And it was determined that coordinated investment in an improvement of infrastructure was needed for the region. The Met Council's role has since expanded since its creation. Today it is responsible for planning for three regional systems, including wastewater, transportation and parks. They are also responsible for developing housing, land use and climate policy to guide development within the region. They are required to create a regional development guide every 10 years. And this is done slightly before we have to do our comp plan to be consistent with their guide. And then they also serve as the Metropolitan Planning Organization and provide transit and wastewater services. So just they the statute has been updated to kind of start to expand beyond just the initial infrastructure goal. That was my understanding that was pretty specific to wastewater when they were first established.
Who reviews their guide? Is it the Minnesota legislation?
You know, that's a great question. I don't know. I
Okay.
I will have to look that up. I don't know. I kind of just assumed that they did it, but I would assume someone has to review it. So I will take a look at that and get back to you on that. I'm so focused on our stuff.
Sorry.
No, it's totally mine. I don't want to work for the Met Council. Some questions that I've just
I'm just trying to figure out their meeting schedule and it's a nightmare, so.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I will, I will look into that. But so the, so the twenty forty comprehensive plan, our current plan was adopted in twenty nineteen. And then the city's process for the twenty fifty comprehensive plan is anticipated to begin next year. And system statements that will guide, it's basically the foundation for how we need to change our comprehensive plan are expected from the Met Council this fall. So this process is typically two to three years with several opportunities for public engagement and meetings. And so we will be designing what that process looks like likely at the end of this year. And again, planning commission will be involved in this process. There will be open houses that you'll be invited to. There will be meetings that this will be discussed both by the city council and you as a commission. So there, this will be something that starts to consume a lot of our time next year.
What time of the year do we normally do it? The winter, the summer, the fall?
It's, I mean, it's yeah, it's not, it's not just like a single thing. It's, it's a two-year process, so it's throughout. I would say some of the open, the, some of the community engagement events are in the summer, maybe, might, maybe more in the summer. I believe we do some open houses as a city and other seasons, but just because people are out and about. And so that's kind of a, a, a good time to meet people where they're at. So there might, so I would say so there's some events that we might have more involvement than some other seasons, but. So again, the system statement, it's called the decennial system statement. So it's individualized for each local government, explains implications of system plans and capital budgets in that community, provides forecasted growth and general development expectations, prompts local governments to update their local comprehensive plan. And they say they are sending it out September twenty twenty-five. And I don't have any reason to suggest otherwise, but sometimes it does bleed into October. And then there are several changes that are expected, new requirements that were, that we've received notes of so far. This is not an exhaustive list. These are just the ones that kind of jumped out at me. So there has been discussion with this already, but within our MUSA, the minimum average density in that area will be going up from a requirement of three units per acre to three point five units per acre. Other cities are having, depending on how they are classified as a city, they may have higher or lower density requirements, but that's specific to us within our MUSA area. There is a requirement to partner, engage and collaborate with underrepresented populations. And that's, I'm not saying that as a bad thing, that's just something that we will have to make sure that we are specifically
Documenting.
Correct. And then including a greenhouse gas emissions inventory is a new requirement, including strategies to address natural system vulnerabilities, so extreme heat, localized flooding.
That's so interesting, that food system disruption is on there.
Yeah, and that was their wording. I took that. So and then residential categories must allow for more than one housing type in each category that is new. We technically already do that because we allow accessory dwelling units in our single family districts. So I don't know that we need to change much. I'm actually more concerned about it for in our high, high-density residential district. We only allow apartment buildings and I don't see how we can allow for another use and still hit the density. That was something that came up in a recent discussion that I had with Met Council. Well, it wasn't just me, it was a group and there was, it got brought up that it doesn't seem to quite make sense. I don't know if that might be getting clarified.
I think the density is usually though for overall, not just one development?
No, it's, it's per development as well. So it needs, so for example, a development coming in for low-density residential has to be at least three units an acre, which is the minimum allowed in that land use category. So it is, it's overall and it's, the overall is the three point five units an acre that we're going to have to hit.
That's just in the MUSA?
Within the MUSA, yeah. And then we have land use, we have fifteen land use categories. Not all of them are residential, but the ones that are, that have a residential component all have a minimum and maximum density target that they have to be within. Identify goals and priorities for large-scale agricultural and small-scale local production. You might like that one.
Comical, maybe a little too late, right? But
And then residential areas intended to accommodate the city's required allocation of affordable housing units must now have a minimum density of ten units per acre and it used to be eight units per acre.
And I actually have a question related to that. Does the city or does the Met Council or the state regulate at all who owns that affordable housing? Because more and more we are seeing out-of-state companies own affordable housing and it is not maintained. So I'm, I'm just wondering like, is that something that the city would stipulate? Or is that something that's regulated by a larger body that this is, these are the limitations of?
Yeah, so I would say the, we don't have, as a city, we don't have any money in affordable housing. Other cities do have money in affordable housing. And so then they do have a lot of ability to make stipulations on who they're providing funding towards.
Right, exactly.
But because we don't, we really don't have an ability to say certain applications will not be granted.
For licensing, right?
Well, so we, for apartment buildings, we are, we have, they would have a rental license and they need to be, they need to fit our licensing requirements. But they, a company from Wisconsin would likely be able to do that. We don't have a limit on how much property they own. We do have a property maintenance code and we have the rental license, so that would be an ability to enforce maintenance of the buildings. So I think you would do it that way, but I don't think we'd be able to prevent an applicant from coming in because they have a poor history in a different city, is what I'm trying to say. If we have money in it, that might be a slightly different story, but we don't. So we just don't provide funding for it. And most of the time, like true affordable housing requires some kind of government subsidy. So whether it comes from the city or the state. And again, we don't, our economic authority does not have, does not have any policies that would allow for funding a project. So it would be something that's coming in from the state likely for us. And then I theoretically, if we were to have policies in the future that did have, that allowed for funding and things like that for affordable housing, then we might be able to reduce the required density that, there's like a credit provided based on your policies. But because we're much more market-driven, we will be subject to that ten units per acre. And I think that the Met Council in their mind, the more density, the cheaper, the more affordable the housing is naturally. So, but yeah, affordable housing is a fun topic. So I would say the bulk of what the planning commission is looking at would be the twenty, will be the twenty fifty future land use map. This is our twenty forty land use map. Majority of the land is classified as ag-residential on the west side. And then the next biggest land use category is, I believe, it's actually low-density residential, but existing residential, we also have a lot of acreage as well in that land use category. And that's actually probably why we have such a fairly low density average because these existing residential areas currently don't have sewer and water for the most part. But we are saying that we would like to eventually get them those services. And so we have to include them in our density calculations and that kind of brings down our overall average. And then we, because low-density residential is the next, or is the largest land use category within the MUSA, which has a minimum density of three units an acre, that's also why our average is pretty low. But anyways, so the, we do have some commercial areas and industrial areas. A lot of those are pretty much built out now. Yeah, I'd say that this is a good map to keep in mind. I think some of the questions that might come up during our comprehensive plan process is we are looking at potentially re-classifying this piece to a residential category, which is an industrial site of about sixty-eight acres.
Top of Larkin?
Correct, yep. And so one of the questions may be where could we potentially make up that loss of acreage? Either with additional commercial or having another industrial area. So that might be a question that we are looking at during the comp plan process. Okay, so then yeah, granted, we have fourteen land use categories and we added a fifteenth category not shown in this table, not shown in the comprehensive plan document. If you were to just download that from the internet, because we created a new land use category for conservation residential within the last year, I think, year or so, that allowed for slightly lower density within the MUSA for new development with a range of two to three units per acre. And then the MUSA density table that's currently in our comp plan shows that we have, we've calculated each land use category for residential to come up to an average net density of three point eleven units per acre. This is now down to about three point oh nine units an acre because we have since again, have approved some developments that are closer to two units an acre. And so that's something that we kind of keep in mind as we continue to potentially look at regiding property. And it's something we'll definitely have to keep in mind because we have to somehow get this up to three point five.
Does the Met Council take into consideration the environmental constraints of a city when setting a density?
So during, with the, with each calculation that's done with a plat, we are able to net out areas from the calculation that are protected by ordinance. So that includes wetlands, wetland buffers, we can net those out. And so that allows for a higher density calculation. And then that's another strategy that has been somewhat floated by discussions with city council and staff is looking at, are there additional ways we can protect natural resources by ordinance that would allow for further areas to be done, so it's easier to hit that three point five. And then I think some other strategies we've looked at is do we now, do we have to add a, have to kind of split up some of the low-density residential acreage to a category that's between low and medium? So to kind of get the average a bit higher. Because right now we have twenty-six hundred net acres and that's reduced, that, because we've developed a lot. Not twenty-six hundred acres, but we have developed several. So we'll be looking at a slightly different number with our twenty fifty plan. But basically if we assume we have two thousand acres, net acres left, then do we take half of that, two thousand acres and put into another land use category that we need to create? That maybe starts at four units an acre? I don't know. That, those are just kind of some ideas that we'd have to think through, we'll have to calculate it. And we get some credit for the developments that came in higher than the minimum. And there's a plat monitoring credit that we get. So it's a, it's not as straightforward as a formula as you'd think. And we don't, we, my understanding is we don't get penalized for plats prior. But it is, we do have a little bit of work to do to get to three point five is all I'm trying to say.
But that doesn't take into account, that's only completed?
Yeah, so these are areas
It doesn't take into account ones that are supposedly coming down?
That's where I get a little confused. My understanding is the existing residential will take into account because they're not currently receiving services. But it won't take into the account, it won't take into account areas. What? Zoom is being crazy. Sorry, they just exited because we've been idle. Yes, but anyways, the, what was I trying to say? The, so the areas
Recording in progress.
That have been platted that are receiving service, are receiving sewer and water. Then that really shouldn't count against us when we're recalibrating the average essentially. Another area that the city is going to have to take a look at is our staging plan. Prior to twenty forty, the infrastructure for sewer relied on several sites for lift stations. And then we hired an engineer as a public works director who took a look at that and said that does not make sense. And so for twenty forty plan, they had identified the screen line that's shown here, a southeast, northeast district gravity connector trunk that reduced significantly our reliance on lift stations to service sewer to our northeast area or for our southeast area, actually. But for whatever reason, the rest of the staging plan did not really get adjusted to really factor in that we need development to pull this pipe down here. So right now we have, the pipe has gone to Brush Creek Reserve. So it's right about here. And then we have pulled it, now, well, yeah, we pulled it across County Road one sixteen. This is my understanding, as part of the water treatment plant and water tower project. And then Hope will be pulling the pipe to, actually this is another application that's coming in.
Thirty?
Well, yeah, they were supposed to pull it here per our plan. We are now looking at potentially an alternative route that would pull it down closer to thirty. And then not, these properties would still have access, but really kind of switching this line over to the closer to one sixteen.
East side?
Yep, closer to one sixteen. So, but with that in mind, we have several properties that are in phases that are much further out into the future that simply doesn't make sense because we can't get the rest of this area to unlock outside of anything that's not this dark fuchsia until this pipe goes in. So I think, for example, this golf course that's shown in our second phase, which is projected for twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, that's not happening. We will need to get this pipe in before they can go. And so I think we're going to have to really take a serious look as a city and most, everything in this, in the southeast area that isn't already dark pink needs to probably go into the last phase, the third or last phase. And we have to really reevaluate this northeast area to move some of these up, so.
And this had been mentioned before, but obviously that area along fifty-five on the west.
Oh, yes, yep.
And how that was planned for?
Yes.
So as a part of the next comprehensive plan, an area other than that isn't possible that that's identified for the next phasing?
Theoretically, I don't think from discussions with city council, there is a desire to expand the MUSA at all. The issue with this area is it's unclear how it's going to be served. So she's talking about our southwest district here. Met Council, per our last plan, they were supposed to complete a study, a future study to address wastewater service. There was talks that would come from Loretto, Medina. Now there's talks that it's going to come from Rogers. I believe somewhere over here, they have, they have obtained a facility that would allow for wastewater treat, wastewater service to come from there. However, the feasibility of bringing that down through here is unclear. Or would it mean that we have to bring it down here, but then we now have a MUSA donut? Um, or would it mean that we have to bring it down here, but then we now have a MUSA donut? So, um, the issue, we could theoretically just take that area out. Um, the problem with that is there are several property owners who have been
Waiting.
Wanting to go, and have been waiting to go for several years. And so my understanding, uh, with cities that have tried in the past to remove something in the MUSA that has been shown in the MUSA for several years, it turns into a political headache, and it doesn't happen. So I don't know exactly what we're doing with that, but yeah, theoretically, we could take it out. Um, and just say that area is, is going to remain rural for the time being. Um, or we might have some other decisions on, um, where would the infrastructure come from? Does, do we have to expand the MUSA, or do we simply have to have a kind of meander on the east side and go that way? I don't know.
And it's that, do we have to trade that land for something else, is I think the thing that people are paying attention to? Because this is obviously a map that some property owners actually look at prior to purchasing where they purchase, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, no, especially it, it's, um, it can be contentious. Especially if someone purchased over here thinking, okay, we'll be one of the last to go, and then now we have to do a MUSA along one eighteen.
Right.
Um, that could be really dis
Right.
So, um, there aren't great answers for this area at the moment. Um, but I, I don't believe the study's been done by Met Council. Um, the last I heard from our rep with the Met Council, it was in the works. So hopefully we have some answers in time for the twenty fifty comp.
Okay.
Um, okay, and then last slide, just, um, our official zoning map. Um, just kind of tying back to how it really ties back to both our staging plan and our land use plan. Um, so this, the, the future land use plan really shows, like, how a property is expected to be in the next twenty years. Um, the zoning map might deviate from that because of our staging map. So I think the biggest thing is this dark green is our urban reserve, and that is essentially a holding zone. Uh, we don't want really very much subdivision in there at all. There is limited ability to subdivide. But we want either really big tracts of land in that area, or we want really small lots. Um, and so the, it's fairly limited for these property owners right now until they are in the current phase of staging, which then they would have a suburban zoning district assigned based on the underlying land use shown in our twenty forty land use plan.
And I don't mean to keep asking questions, so I'm sorry, fellow commissioners, but, uh, the city came before and asked for a change to the phasing. Is an individual applicant able to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, so I would say they can do that. The issue being in our southeast district, we don't have capacity without taking something that's currently shown in the fuchsia, fuchsia, out. Um, now we might, and we might have some property owners that are in the fuchsia that would be like, oh, yeah, I can go out. But the city might have alternative goals that, no, we're not going to do that. So we have, again, with the comprehensive plan amendment, we do have the ability to be like, no, we don't like that. We don't want to do that. Um, it's different than some of our other applications. Um, but the, um, it, it would be challenging, I think, for the southeast district to have, to be moved up in the staging. The northeast district, I think we have much more flexibility to make those kind of calls. Just the reality of sewer capacity in the southeast district, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think that is a, um, bit more of a deep dive into all the moving components of what we were looking at as a commission. Uh, is there any other questions before we wrap up with the presentation?
Are you gonna be sending this out to the?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was really nicely done.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. We spent, I, I was trying to do it last week on my vacation, uh, and I decided, no, I'm gonna just take my vacation, and, um, so I spent all day today on it.
That was, it was nice.
And I'm glad you decided not to do it on your vacation.
Okay, so we are going to do a game. It's a bit definitely different than, uh, what we've done in the past, so we're it's not Hollywood Squares, to be clear.
It is similar to Hollywood Squares, but slightly different.
Who's the game show lover between the two of you?
Okay, but I, this was his idea. He, this was him do it.
I'm excited, alright.
So if it's boring, you can blame yourself. If it's great, you can
Give you all the kudos.
I read something that gaming, especially after, um,
A long presentation?
Yes, actually helps you retain the material.
Absolutely.
So, um, we can go through the hosts of the, of the game show, and then we can assign teams, because it's tic-tac-toe trivia type, type deal here, so. Um, the Corcoran Squares are, um, Stu, our divide, uh, Zou, Ning. Uh, Agar, Agatha Culture.
Agatha Culture?
Gusty Fields. Um, Randy Bufferzone. Uh, Silas Stainable. Uh, Grant Eesman. A lot of Acres. And Barb Wire. So those are the, uh, the Corcoran Squares, and they will, um, have questions for each of the teams, and the goal is to get tic-tac-toe three in a row. Um, so I don't know how you guys want to divide the teams. You want to do, um, just based on how you're sitting? Or if you want to do most experienced and least experienced?
I don't know about the experience.
We thought it might make sense for you as the chair and our new planning commissioner to team up, but we can leave that up to you guys. So we see a team of X's and a team of Y's.
We can, we can, we'll, we'll team up.
Okay, uh, so who's X's and who's Y's?
But that makes me feel like a little bit of pressure.
Um, so then I guess Commissioners Zachman and Hargreaves can be X, and then Kaziki and Brumman can be
Oh, I thought we were doing Brumman and Zachman.
Oh, sorry. Oh, okay, I missed, I missed that situation.
Okay, so Zachman and
Will be X's, they can be Y's.
Perfect.
Does anyone have a preference on who goes first, or we can flip a coin?
Paper, rocks, scissors?
Here we go, yeah. Each team captain would do a paper, scissors, to go first.
Okay, ready? Paper, scissors, okay, ready? One, two, three, shoot. We go first. Paper gets, or scissors cut paper. Fair enough.
Do you have a preference on which?
I'll let you do it, Zachman.
Um, we'll go with, uh, so we select a person?
Yep.
Uh, Barb Wire.
Oh, I forgot which one was
That's nine.
It's not nine.
I made the names out of my head.
They were catchy.
Uh, so the first question, what are police powers?
And does he have to answer, or we can answer as a team?
You as a team answer. If you get it wrong, you know, go to the other team, and it'll just go back and forth until I
They're the powers afforded to the municipal, uh, planning authority in the US Constitution and the Minnesota Constitution.
That, that is correct.
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
Well, no, but I can say you got that from my presentation. I would say it's pretty good.
Okay, okay.
From my presentation, I can see how you got that answer, so I wouldn't say it's wrong, um, because that is what
You wanted what they do, not where they come from.
Right.
Right.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was wrong, so.
Thanks.
I like it.
Based on the presentation.
Okay, put a XR.
Yes.
He's trying.
This is the practice run. All right, uh, so the O's?
Five.
Five. Uh, the city has the, the most discretion when establishing and amending which three guiding documents?
Comp plan, zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance?
That is correct.
Woo-hoo, way to go.
Go back to the home screen here. All right.
Just a clarifying question. Did you have that, uh, those flipped on the, that's from the pyramid, right?
And they were the bottom three, the ones in green.
Oh, they were, they were three in green, okay.
Yeah, subdivision and zoning ordinance are on the same line.
Ah. All right, X's?
Should we take number six? How do you feel about that, six? Yeah, we'll go six.
Six? Name two elements that would be included in a preliminary plat.
That would be lot, size, and